August 7th, 2018 in room 137 at the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Sussner.
Here.
Ms. Seeling.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as we're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01 approval of the agenda, are there any changes to be made? Oh, sorry.
There are no changes?
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Do any board members have any reports to make on events, meetings that they have participated in? Yes, sir. Mr. Barlow.
I'll just quickly comment. I had the opportunity this past week to attend the MSBA Summer Seminar and covered some wonderful topics to include mental health and as well as personalized learning. And I'll share a more detailed response to you later, but let me mention at this time how the organizers of this particular seminar had mentioned that they had never seen so many board members and superintendents attend the session on mental health. And it was very important, they helped us to navigate and understand the importance of mental health and mental illness, and I think that's hugely important. And I look forward to having that discussion with our district and seeing what we can do.
Thank you. Any other reports? From the Community Engagement Committee, our subcommittee, the Community Focus Team, is going to be having tables at some of the schools in the district during meet the teacher scheduled pickup time, and they'll be providing some information about the work of their committee and with an opportunity for people who would like to join to do so at that time. 4.0 Consent Agenda. This is an action item.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we do have two retirements. Mary Sorensen, School Counselor at John Marshall High School, retirement end of July. She spent 24 years in the district. And then Patrice Thompson, 4th grade teacher at Gibbs. Her retirement was, is at the end of October this month, this year, and she'd be with the district 22 years. So, thanks to those two individuals for their service to our district.
Thank you very much. 5.01, Facilities Task Force Update. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Kevin Holm from LHB and Mark Queasley, one of the task force co-chairs, and they will be giving us an update on the work of the task force.
All right. I'm Kevin Holm, and I'll go through a real quick agenda for you folks and then turn it over to Mark. So, we'll start off talking about some of the key dates, the approach that we're taking and working with the task force and the cabinet, the information we're gathering, those types of things. And then you'll hear the first pieces of information that the task force has wrestled with and got to understand and recommendations that they're making on those pieces. So, with that, some of the key dates that we have laid out there. Right now, the first deadline is, we were told that in October you folks wanted to make a decision on whether or not there was going to be any boundary adjustments for the 2018-19 school year, so we're working through that process. The next piece is a actual survey. You'll hear more about that in the approach and the idea that the survey would be submitted out to your residents this coming January. Board decision on whether or not you go for a referendum and what that scope would be, what the needs are, that type of piece. And again, that's part of the scope that the task force will be making recommendations to you folks on. If there is a vote, November 19 is the intended date right now, based on the conversations that we've been having. And then, just for a scope and a scale and idea of what, how long it takes for the construction to happen, August of 2022 is when you would enter any type of a new facility if one was required. So, there's a significant amount of time and of design and construction that's required after the referendum passes in order to start to deal with some of the crowding issues. So, the structure that you see in front of you, basically the LHB team is ourselves and three other consultants. We're working to provide information to the cabinet, glean information from the district, from the county, from the city. We're also gathering as much information as we can from the District Medical Center to identify some of the growth type pieces. We're providing that information for the task force. The task force then either makes decisions or asks for more information, which we then generate. So, we're basically trying to be the workhorses for individuals to make informed decisions. Community and citizen voice, you had a great output for the task force, I believe over 200 members. And so, the members that aren't directly or weren't able to be put directly under the task force are part of that citizen voice makeup so that we can continue to get their feedback and information from a dedicated group of citizens. Scope of task force, Mark will cover that.
Certainly. First of all, Marla Carney, who is the other co-chair, could not be here this evening. So, in the future, when we do give updates, Marla assures me that she will be sitting here with us as we go through this. As Kevin mentioned, we do have a lot of data that we're looking at or requesting from his firm to help us with our analysis piece. We're looking at the community's voice. We had our first session last week and got some good information from the community. Many of the questions that were brought forward, we as committee members felt really good about because they are actually items that we are dealing with as we go along. The task force itself ranges with community members, grandparents, all the way down to parents with newborn children, and some are with kids in the district and some have had students go through Rochester Public Schools. So, good cross-section of Rochester as far as community members. The recommendations that we're looking at are in the process of building sites, boundaries, referendum scope, or if there will be a referendum, messages that need to be given, and then updates to the actual board itself. So, currently, that's our scope, and then at the end, we'll kind of give you the next step for us as we're moving along.
As I mentioned, the LHB team, LHB is an architectural design firm with engineering. CRW is our local teammate. They are a local architectural firm in the area. Jason Woodhouse, our representative that's been helping us out with the POC and the task force. The other two groups are national groups that work with educational capacity, educational planning, growth models, those types of things, the elements that you folks are dealing with on a regular basis. We felt it was important to bring in somebody like Cooperative Strategies, who has national experience in different types of growth, those types of pieces. We had worked with them in the past under a different name for the White Bear Lake School District a few years ago. So, School Perceptions is the firm that will be helping with the survey process. Again, that is their specialty, that's what they do, so they understand what the data means when it comes back from that survey and how to use that data to help inform you folks and give you recommendations on what to do and where to go with the final scope. Both of those firms are, do not have any design capacity or capabilities, so they are very much a neutral party in the sense that they have no perceived gain if they're recommending a increase in schools or any other type of approach to your facilities. So, when we talk about enrollment projections, I see that the PDF did not come out clear. I apologize for that. When we talk about enrollment projections, that's everything from will your grades increase in size as they go through? They call that live-in projections, meaning will your kindergarten class get larger as it goes to first grade and second grade? You definitely have some history of that happening. The other piece that they will look at is the information based on housing analysis. And this piece is definitely a science, but definitely an art associated with it. So, what they've already started to do is grab information from the county and from the city on past building permits, and they'll look at what those building permits mean relative to student enrollment. So, I don't expect you to be able to see or read this graph other than the fact that it starts to show how a housing neighborhood or a group of homes built will ebb and flow with enrollment of students. So, if you can imagine, a new residential neighborhood will actually have a higher student count in that five to 10-year range, and then after that 10, 10 to 15, the number of students per household actually starts to decline as the neighborhood matures. And so, they'll be able to look at your existing neighborhoods that have matured and now are coming back, as well as looking at what the housing capability or stock is for some of the undeveloped property. And between past and future, they'll make some recommendations on how that may impact enrollment to specific buildings as well as the district as a whole. When we talk about other pieces with enrollment projections, that graph in the lower left-hand corner is actually your school district. It's, actually, I'm sorry, that's a different school district. The one for yours is in Mark's information. Again, that starts to indicate how student enrollment changes as it goes from grade to grade and starts to show where the impact and the overcrowding or undercrowding, depending on which type of district you have, occurs. The GIS system, you actually have a system that already deals with this in some fashion. Theirs is a little bit more in-depth, and we're actually working with the district right now to make sure that you save your student files from year to year so that you can take a look at this in a more strategic fashion as you go forward. So, the information that you're getting out of this report won't just help you this time, it'll help you in the years to come as you look at enrollment and projections and where things are at. Facility master planning, so you've already completed an entire facility assessment of your facilities, the deferred maintenance piece, some people call it, or the work that needs to be done for corrections, whether it's roofs, walls, windows, that type of thing. And so, that information you already have, and it will be factored into this process as well. Educational adequacy is related to the capabilities of a building and how it relates to the way you're delivering your current curriculum or how you would like to deliver your curriculum. And you'll hear more about this when we talk about capacity analysis and what the true capacity of a building is based on the educational standards that have been set forward by the building and the district itself. When we talk about building security, this is one of those elements. There is funding that's out there right now that's been approved by the legislature, and the district itself will continue. You folks are pursuing those dollars. There may be elements that won't get funded through that based on the needs across the state. Some of those pieces may find their way into the referendum as well, depending on how the task force looks at needs and scope analysis. When we talk about operations, operational costs of a building, it's everything from the staffing to the transportation, food service delivery, those types of elements. So, we'll look at the cost per student for buildings so that you have that information, and you'll be able to understand how a new facility or a larger facility will affect those numbers one way or the other. You also have some elements that come up in the facility planning that directly relate to mechanical systems or electrical systems within the building. Those systems will have a payback or an energy savings or an operational savings to the facility, which will also affect those numbers. Equity is always one of those difficult pieces. For some folks, a historic building has a higher value than what a new building might provide. Other people believe that the new building with some of the new spaces and those types of things has a different value. The goal is to make sure that you're able to deliver the curriculum that you need to from each one of the facility types and that there is that equal opportunity for engagement of the students within the facilities themselves. This last slide just talks about how we tie all those pieces together. So, that's the type of information that we're trying to gather and generate to provide to the task force so they can make decisions and recommendations and move forward. When we talk about the community survey, excuse me, the community survey group will help us with timing recommendations, with scope and scale and size, what the tax tolerance is of your community. How do they do that? The survey itself defines what some of the talking points are, what some of the elements are that are included or expected to be needs. It also then asks the question of would you support this and at what level would you support this? So, there's a number of questions. Some of those questions are questions that are similar to what they've used in other districts, so they have that background of knowledge and comparison, and that would be the tax impact type questions of how they're worded and the variation in size. Other questions are going to be obviously directly specific to the needs of your district that the task force has identified that you need to find an answer of, will the community support those elements, and if so, at what level does it look like they'll support it? So, their methodology, they don't do a random sampling, so it's not a random phone call that individuals get and then decide if they want to answer or not. It's a full mailing to all of your households within the district. If there is a household that has more than one voting member and they would like to answer two surveys or three surveys even, they can call and request an additional code or number to enter. Those mail-in surveys can be done by paper and returned in an envelope, or they can be done online. So, again, trying to make sure we hit the different generations and their abilities to do it. The other piece with this group is they are able to put it into multi-language, multiple languages and offer that availability as well. So, if an individual in a household doesn't, isn't fluent in English or isn't comfortable taking the survey in an English form, they can ask for it in another language and be done that way. It can actually be done as a phone survey at that point if somebody would rather do it verbally versus reading and written, Mark, or online. So, then the next piece to this whole element, which it actually has already started, is the information distribution. How do we make sure that this information is getting out to the community so that A, we get feedback early in the process, and that B, the community feels fully informed and engaged as we go through the process and has the ability to make an informed decision when it comes time to vote? I tell this to every district, you will always have members that say, we haven't heard anything about this, you haven't done a good job of distributing this information. But, the intent is that every step we go, we'll be providing updates to the board, we'll have the citizen meetings, and make sure that we get the information out through normal channels as well as social media, and then hopefully rely on word of mouth and individuals to pass on the word of it as well.
Next slide we're going to look at explains our enrollment basically through 2017 of October of last year. So, if you go from October of 2011 through 2017, we're seeing a significant growth in our student enrollment for Rochester Public Schools. The area in red also defines where we are showing an increase on a yearly basis. So, if it's blue, those numbers are not showing an increase, but as you can see in our pre-K, early K through 5th, 6th grade, we are seeing an increase in our enrollment numbers. Also, within this last year, we're showing an increase in our 9th grade population as well, as you notice on the far right in October. So, as of last year, we went from 17,646 students to 17,932 students in one calendar year. How do we figure the capacity in these buildings, and specifically the elementary buildings right now is what we've been focusing our time on? We look at the capacity that the district has set up for class sizes from kindergarten through 5th grade, and then also, is there special programs within each building? The teaching space, the square footage in each building, technology capacities, and what are some unique programs that that building might be doing on their own? This next slide talks about our elementary buildings again, the square footage. I'm going to go from left to right here for you. The square footage of each one of the buildings, the enrollment in 1718, the recommended capacity from the Minnesota Department of Education, our capacity based on the enrollment in 2017, and then the actual recommended enrollment, which I'll get to that next slide. And then, the items in yellow, or orangeish-yellow, I guess on your slide, are the Title I schools. So, they can decrease their class sizes based on the pupil that comes into their building. So, as instructional spaces are broken down, they have the flexibility to do things a little bit differently to meet the individual needs of the students in their classrooms.
And that's achieved through the Title I funding, which is a federal funding source.
Yeah. Okay. So, the next slide, if we're using Bamber Valley as an example, when we're trying to figure out the capacity, we would take the enrollment. I'm going to go one to third column down, our third horizontal column. Rochester Public Schools recommends we have 20 kids in the kindergarten grade level, 24 in first grade, 29 in second and third, 31 in fourth and fifth grade. Those are our recommended class sizes. So, if we were to break Bamber Valley down by sections, there could be seven sections of kindergarten, seven sections of first grade, 5, 5, 5, basically your classroom. So, that one, again, you would take the smallest number there, which would be 140, multiply that times the sixth grades, and that kind of gives you your capacity of your building. Now, if you move to first grade, all of a sudden, your capacity, your smallest number is in that first grade class because, again, your class sizes change based on what grade level the students are in. Okay? Next slide we're going to talk about is the actual enrollment. Last year, again, we have on the left-hand side the square footage of each building, the acreage of each one of our elementary buildings, and then the recommended capacity, which we were talking about on the previous slides, and the enrollment in 2017. And then also on the far-right column are some special programs that that building might have. So, Bamber Valley, Elton Hills, Franklin, Gibbs, Jefferson, and Sunset Terrace are all over capacity currently for us, and we actually have one school that is basically at capacity, and that is Falwell. So, we have six elementaries that are at or over capacity. Now, also, on the bottom, you'll notice we have the red circle there, our enrollment, and then our actual square footage that we have. So, we have 8,055 students last year in our elementary classes. We have square footage for 7,820 students, so you can see district-wide, we're going over capacity for our students. The other night at the community meeting I talked about, it would be great if we could start on one side of Rochester and fill our schools to capacity, and then on the last school, we have all this space. That's not the way it's going to work with all the pockets in Rochester, and as you can see with our enrollment numbers, our enrollment increases are just not on one side of town. We're going from Bamber Valley to Elton Hills to Jefferson all over Rochester. So, our growth is unique throughout the city of Rochester. Then our committee talked about short-term options to consider. Should we stay status quo with our enrollment and not do anything? Should we recommend boundary adjustments? Should we look at district-wide options? And then, were there other things that we should be considering as we looked at this elementary enrollment? So, then, short-term options, you know, are there things that we could do by flip-flopping Washington and Riverside? Add another district-wide option school? Add district-wide option to Riverside? Move our Spanish immersion programs to a different location? Move our Montessori to a different location as well? Again, just looking at all the options, not to say we're doing any one of these options, but just as if we're putting everything out there on the table. And then, we had talked, will district-wide option help our capacity or not? And some of our community members also asked about, we have warehouse space in Rochester, can we take our overcrowded schools and use warehouse space to house our students? And no, we can't. By the Department of Education, they have a certain standard. As a school board, you wrestled with this with the Minnesota School of Business. You wanted to purchase that, and it didn't meet the standards that were laid out by MDE. So, we explained that to them. The learning curve on some of these items was pretty significant for our community members to understand. And then, we talked about the short-term options of just the status quo. Not moving students can be a good thing because it does not disrupt the families. It's difficult to avoid dealing with the boundary adjustments. There's always that emotion of moving students and/or families. A weakness that we talked about is the overcrowding, the overcrowdedness continues in many of the buildings, doesn't solve our long-short-term problem. Chaos continues, stress is high for students, staff in those buildings, and questions, again, are there other issues that are causing our enrollment, exceptions to attendance, things like that? Short-term options for boundary adjustment. We talked about, will it help us reduce our class sizes short-term, limit the buildings that are needed, bigger bang for the dollar as we try to squeeze our dollars as far as we can to try and make sure that we're as prudent with our tax dollars as we can be. The weakness is, even with a boundary adjustment, you are going to disrupt families. There is that emotion slash anger for our community, possibly losing the identity of some students within that school, and then it's going to be a short-term solution. Doing a boundary adjustment in the near future for the board, if we see that enrollment is going to continue to increase, and then we decide that we need another elementary, there will be another boundary adjustment, just so that people understand that boundary adjustment might not be a one-time thing, it could be several times as we look at the growth in all six of these buildings at the current rate. Short-term options for the district-wide, again, with the district-wide option, we wanted to look at, can we increase the capacity of those buildings as much as we can? And so, for 2018, we really talked about, are these buildings opening at capacity as much as possible? And we are assured that we're trying to work through that process to make sure that all of the buildings are open at capacity, and it could help alleviate a little bit of the overcrowdedness. District-wide option will not take care of all of the needs that we have here. So, again, a weakness is, we may exclude students within walking distance of that building, moving students around multiple times in a year. If we try to maximize that option of filling that, a student could be in a classroom two or three weeks, and then a district-wide option spot would open up, and then that student could move. Just some emotional things there that the committee wrestled with and talked about as well. Another thing that we talked about were questions about this district-wide option. If we maximize the capacity of our district-wide option, how, would you have to change the criteria for selection in those district-wide option schools? And an example of that that was talked about is for 2019, let's say you had six slots in a second-grade classroom in one of our district-wide schools, the criteria could change to look at the overcrowded schools first and bring students in that were coming from an overcrowded school as a criteria rather than the lottery system. So, some, just some suggestions there for the district to look at. Again, the district-wide option will not solve the capacity problems that we are going to be continuing to encounter, but can it help? It certainly could. This year, it will be a little, next year, hopefully, it will be a little bit more. But, again, our committee preferred the first step of the boundary adjustment as the first option. Next steps for our group, we're going to look at middle school and high school enrollment and capacity numbers, boundary, short-term, long-term, safety and security. The equity piece, as Kevin mentioned, are there buildings that need art rooms, music rooms onto their buildings or need a second gym because that gymnasium's being used for breakfast and lunch, and the FIAD staff is not even having really an opportunity to use that gymnasium as an instructional space? Options for increasing capacity across the district, sites and locations, and then continuing to look at the scope of a referendum. Any questions? Any questions?
So I guess this is more a question for you, Mr. Hall. Is your PowerPoint available for the board to look at?
Yeah, I got it a little bit late.
Okay, I just, just so we can see it because, as you know, the distance vision, and there's a lot of material too. Okay, so I appreciate that. I have one and a half more questions. Do you want to have somebody else talk?
I have one point five more questions.
So this is actually kind of about two-part question. So why did the timeline change from what the board was originally given on the May fifteenth meeting? Which was, I think that the board would have, let's see. A final recommendation would be hopefully available on November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. And then there were some suggested dates for referendum, February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, being the soonest one. So obviously, that timeline has changed, and I would kind of like to have to know why that changed. And secondly, whether it's going to be extended now? In that, does that go over the amount that we had budgeted as maximum for of two hundred and forty-nine thousand?
So our, so our fee does not increase based on that schedule change. The original schedule that was proposed in there was based, giving you, giving the district then the option to go for, in theory, a spring nineteen or a fall nineteen, when it was decided that fall nineteen was the direction it was going to go. And the amount of interaction that the task force was going to have in making this recommendation process. We felt that it was better to take more time to bring those individuals up to speed. They don't live and breathe the district the way the cabinet does and others do. So we need to do a little bit more education and a little bit more time and due diligence of gathering the information that they're looking for, that they don't have the answers so they can make informed decisions.
So that original date of November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, was predicated on sort of maybe having a referendum before the public as early as February of two thousand nineteen? Is that?
That, that was our thought, is that it could go that early if you needed to. But the, the demand didn't seem to be critical enough to not be able to go through this process.
Thank you.
And I'd also, I know you expressed some concern about timing. I think way back last February, when John, when we first started having this conversation, is really the start of a referendum. We've already been talking about it for several months. I think what the board could do is, just like we did in two thousand fifteen, you pass the resolution that you're going to go do one, and then later on, I don't remember how many months between that date and the actual date that you set the dollar amount. So you could, if the concern is that the vote yes committee wouldn't have enough time, the board could sooner than that, say, yes, we're going to, we're going to support a resolution that we're going to go for referendum. And then after the survey, once we've tested the dollar amount, you can come back and settle on the exact dollar amounts you can ask for. So I think that may be a way to address your concerns about the timing. But I would argue that we've already been having those conversations out and the way that we're doing these community meetings and the fact that they will be coming to you every month as a board, giving you an update, that's getting the message out there. So I guess I'm not concerned about, too much about the timing of the, having enough time to get the word out, because I think we've been doing that already. But the board, that does leave an option, the board could just pass a resolution that, yes, we officially are going to go to the voters, and then we'll come back and decide the actual dollar amount, which we did in two thousand fifteen.
Would you anticipate that the board could make that decision before March? I've had several community members approach me who are just gung-ho, like, what can we do? We want to really get this out to the community and start, you know, talking to people about it, but they're not, it's not an organized group. And I understand that the board and the district cannot organize such a group. But at the same time, if there is already interest in the, in the, from the community to have something like this, do you have any recommendations about how they might go about it? Or should they just wait until the board has?
I guess I, I wouldn't encourage them to go out and start organizing until the board has actually taken action. But I'm not going to give you a month, but I can say before March. Probably even before January. You could pass a resolution, say, yes, we're going to go for a referendum. If it's official, then they can really start their, their work. And then I, I don't remember, I'd have to look up. I know we did that when we went to the voters in two thousand fifteen. You passed the resolution that you were going to go for one. And then after we did, I think, second round, the second survey, you settled on a dollar amount, and then. So we could do something very similar to that. It's just, as, as he said, it, to be honest with you, the first couple of meetings was really trying to educate the community members. I mean, we know what a district-wide option school is. They had no clue what that was. So really, I mean, it's that type of detail that we had to bring them up to speed on that really now, I think we're, in the last meeting, the last two meetings, we've really gotten into the elementary capacity. We've talked about the short-term solutions, and they did some group work on that. But that, that's always an option. The board could pass a resolution saying you're going to go to the voters and then come up with a dollar amount later.
I, I guess some of my concern with that would be, I mean, I'm kind of conflicted with this, would be if we were to make that kind of a statement yet in two thousand eighteen, but we haven't collected information from the survey in January of two thousand nineteen, that we would be saying, well, we're going to move ahead. We will probably move ahead with this without having had all of the data that we really need in order to make it official.
Well, we did that in two thousand fifteen. You passed the resolution that we were going to go to the voters.
And then we did the surveys after?
Yeah, that's one, because if you remember, we put, I think, three different dollar amounts out there. And then after that second interview, we said, all right, this is the amount we're going to go for. And then you did the official application and all that. But we did pass a resolution that we were going to do a referendum and then came back and set it on the dollar amount.
Okay. Do, do you see that process as doable?
Yes, yep. Generally, if, if we're meeting with the school district for the first time, we tell them that they need at least a year from when we start the conversation to the referendum, and that ideally, you have four to six months of defined answer prior to the referendum. So the schedule that we're on, we're actually, we have more time. We started, you know, late June with that process.
Series of questions, I'll be brief. My impression is that since two thousand fifteen, there are certain aspects of the community which would want us to be more physically forward-thinking versus the writing of blank checks or designation of blank amounts of money. That being said, my concern is, in light of some of the more recent mayoral campaign comments, as it may relate to comprehensive planning and working with intergovernmental agencies such as the city of Rochester, the county of Olmsted in terms of land usage, I was hoping I would hear something in regards to that. Are we actively doing that? Are we sharing land space or considering what we can do together or separately? And then potentially, when do we meet, if you will, a critical mass? You made reference to overcrowding or capacity analysis, and we are, four, seven of our schools currently at that point. I won't call it breaking point, but overcrowding. So when does that overcrowding begin to affect quality education? I don't know if that goes beyond the purview of the facilities task force, but you, a number of consultants are part of this coalition. Does anyone look at that or consider that? And then finally, are, will there be additional add-ons potentially to the referendum? You had referenced security as a potential add-on. What will be other add-ons? The initial referendum consideration for us was the construction of new facilities because of increased student growth. And, and, but now possibly, security potentially could be added to that referendum. Are you considering other add-ons or, and I'll stop there.
Can I, I'll start with the first part. I would like to see this committee crawl, then walk, then run. And we're still in the crawl state because it took us a long time to get them to understand that elementary data and what each building was at for capacity, and how thirty students being over capacity is an additional classroom, or sixty students over capacity is two classrooms. And getting them to comprehend that was significant because sometimes you just look at enrollment, oh, thirty extra kids, no big deal. But when you're using every space in that building, you don't have a space for thirty more students. So then it does impact the instructional capabilities for each one of those, those classroom teachers to relate to those students. The other part is, is we're not even through the high school numbers yet to get a full grasp on what our whole need here is going to be, whether it's an elementary, elementary, middle school. Some of the committee members want us to predict out ten years what our needs are going to be so that we're not going back for multiple referendums. And with Rochester growing as quick as it is, that might be hard for us to figure out as a committee is, what direction do we go? Some already want us to pick a plot of land already. We're, we're not there yet with our data and analyzing everything that we need to get through. So I would encourage you to, as those community members come forward, to just give us a little bit of time until we can get the data to show where our population is, where it's growing, what buildings are being impacted. Hopefully, within the five-year scope, we can show what buildings are going to continue to grow, which ones are going to be over capacity. Because if we have six over capacity now, I'm assuming we'll have many more in two years when we possibly get to a referendum date that are also going to be over capacity. So those are some things that we're just trying to get through, and we're in a, I would consider some of the early stages of our discussions. But long-term, yeah, we're also looking at, can we put park space on these? Can we do an agreement with the city of Rochester for, like Century High School when it was built? It's a hundred and seven acres, I believe. So some of that is parkland, some of it is school district land as well. So there is an interest as the city grows to be collaborative and share that information as well. And then that ten-year long-range facility plan, there's a lot of things on that ten-year plan that might need to be addressed with the part of this referendum. Again, when we get to that, we'll digest that as well to come back to you with that part of a recommendation. I hope that answers your question. Is, we're, we're trying to get through data as quick as we can, but as Mike said, some of it is so deep for our, our community members to understand that we just don't want to rush past it and just, and say, just trust us on this. We want them to understand the information and be transparent with it. And I'll add to that. Yet we, we've, several months ago, we've started a conversation, John, with Parks and Rec. And they're very open to expanding the partnership. We already have some sites where part of our playground is City Park. So they're very open to that. I think a lot depends on where we decide to build and if it meets a need that they have in that area as well. I would say this task force, we're not telling them, here's your objective, do we need two buildings? They're going to look at, they may look at another option to address the capacity. Maybe they look at, let's just add on to a couple of schools, and that'll take, I mean, we want them to look at all options. Here's our capacity, look at options, not just saying, all right, tell us where we should build our schools. So they're going to look at not only the building capacity, if you look at there were safety, and, you know, maybe do we look at some of our sites, current sites that don't have a secured entrance? Do we tack on that as well to it? So they're going to look at a wide range of things and then come back to the board with a recommendation. It may be, no, we think you should just ask for this amount for two schools, that's it. Or they may say, ask for a little more, so you can add on this and this to it. So they're going to really spend some time looking at all of that.
You gave us quite a task. You really did. And the brevity of what we're trying to unfold and take a look at is very comprehen, we're hoping very comprehensive for hopefully, a ten-year scope or a picture. But as Kevin has said, sidebar conversations with me is, with the dynamics of Rochester and how fast it's growing, this data might be very accurate short-term, but long-term, we just don't know sometimes just yet. But we're going to get into some of that demographic information here in our next couple of meetings and try and understand the population, how it's coming to us. As you'll notice on the, and again, we apologize that you don't have these slides directly on your desktops, but the one where it's kind of a reddish-pink, you'll notice that the ninth-grade enrollment just this last year is all of a sudden up from where it was. We're at thirteen fifty-six last year with our ninth graders. Well, the year before, we were at twelve sixty-two as they came out of eighth grade. And where are these ninth graders coming from? They're new enrolled students in our district, and as a high school administrator trying to get ready for fall sports, every day, I'm seeing new students coming in and asking for information that are new to Rochester at a exponential rate than what we have in years past. And they're not just ninth graders. They've got younger siblings too that are populating those younger grade levels as well. So we're seeing it at the high school level with all kinds of new students moving in as well. So all of a sudden, there's a bump in that graph there where seventh and eighth grade are not growing, but all of a sudden, our ninth grade is. So it'll be interesting to see what October of eighteen brings us here for numbers, and if that number continues to grow all of a sudden at the high school level.
And one point I would make, based on the presentation that, that I did. When we talked about the enrollment projections, they will actually provide projections for low, medium, high, and then they're recommended based on what they're seeing in the community over the past couple of years. So you'll see a deviation of that graph as you go out to ten years of what that growth might be. And then, you know, through conversations, they'll make a recommendation of what they think it should be. And then you'll continue to look at that every, every year, every other year to see which, which path you're going on and how that might affect the, the long-term growth overall.
Well, I forgot one part of Mr. Barlow's question there is that what size of an elementary would be ideal? The committee did initially talk about that, and sorry, I forgot that, to respond to that question. We're looking at a seven to eight hundred student elementary as kind of an idea of the next step if we were to go that route. Just based on the number of sections, the curriculum being taught, shared resources and that type of thing. If you go smaller than that, you're not as efficient. If you go larger than that, it's really becoming a bigger building than what the committee kind of is comfortable with at this time. So I, I forgot to answer that part, but that, they kind of talked about what's the ideal size for an elementary? Not that it will end up that, but they had that discussion.
Thank you for your presentation and your thoroughness, because as mentioned, this is a lot of information. I do have one of those ninth-grade students last year. And actually, I think part of that, although not in my case, part of, those are the nine-eleven babies. So those, that's a big bubble, so I don't know if that gets tracked in, you know, big-picture things. But I, I have always noticed that's been a very large class. I wanted to ask Mr. Queasely, you have a very, the timeline. What can we expect to see from you going forward when you and your co-chair come before us? And, you know, will it be a similar presentation? And, and what do you foresee coming with in terms of a recommendation? Do you, do you foresee this group? And I know you don't have a crystal ball, so, but I'm just sort of asking for a general sense of, of when we see you back, what will we be discussing and seeing similar sorts of things? Or, or will you be maybe shaping something that more is coming to be a recommendation or two recommendations?
I would guess the next time we come before you, we'll have an understanding of those middle and high school numbers and the capacity of those buildings based on an eight-period day and classroom teachers teaching five out of the eight classes, and how that impacts each one of those buildings and how we build a schedule. That is going to be a huge curve for the community members to understand is, you can't run a high school at a hundred percent capacity, and why is that? Well, the classroom teacher only can teach so many hours a day. And, and so I think that'll take us a, a good majority of that meeting. We're going to continue to have those discussions about the boundary, the security piece. We really want to make sure that we're taking care of. We really wanna make sure that we're taking care of the security needs of our building across the district. And also, are we seeing, I doubt we'll have enrollment numbers till October or November, I'm guessing, Mr. Munoz, right? For where, where our enrollment is for this year with every one of our buildings, to see that crystal ball as to what it looks like this year. And again, if we're ready for some type of recommendation on this is where Rochester is growing, you know, but I would say in the next couple of meetings, probably the next meeting, we'll be giving you a lot of that information. So will we be ready for a site yet or a size of a building? I don't foresee that just yet.
This is, this is really structured, so every month, they're gonna come back and tell you what they've been working on. So whenever they come with a recommendation, you've, you've learned the background, the information that they looked at in considering to make this recommendation versus you never hear from them, they come and say, here's a recommendation. And also a way to educate our community on, this is the work they're doing, so we can help, it'll help us understand the recommendation that they'll bring to you eventually, whenever that we land on that.
Ms. Becker.
Okay, so Mark, you just talked about the capacity at the high schools. So I guess I would, I would hope that you potentially could look beyond just the eight-period day and say, well, what would happen if we had a nine-period day, or if we had a ten-period day, or like ALC, that's got a twelve-period day? What can the capacity of the school be then? And the staff, the staff may change, you know, because the staff, you know, teaches five hours a day where there might be two teachers that have that one classroom, because there's, you know, twelve periods in a day. You know, two teachers plus maybe two teachers that are just teaching, you know, single classes or something. So I guess I would hope that, you know, along with your teaching of the, of the committee members that we shouldn't limit ourselves to having just an eight-period day because we've always had an eight-period day. And I know that at the high school, you know, the gyms and that are being utilized a lot, much more than I thought. But the classrooms aren't. They're, they're sitting there in many cases and not, not used, I would say, to the fullest capacity. So I would, I would encourage you to say, well, let's, let's, and especially at the high school level. I mean, elementary, you know, like it's a little bit weird probably, but, you know. You know, maybe, and maybe it switches from ninth graders have a really traditional day, but by the time you're a senior in high school, you know, many kids are, well, they're adults, they're eighteen. They're, you know, going off to college, they're going off to work, they're going off to do many things in, you know, three months after they graduate. So can we give them more flexibility in helping them transition into adulthood?
Absolutely. And one of the things that we initially talked about already at the cabinet level is just the three high schools currently. Century High School, the classroom teachers are not in the classroom all day long. So they have their own resource area, so then we can change the capacity of that classroom to maximize it as best we can. At Mayo and John Marshall, that's not necessarily the case. So could that be one of the ways that we increase our capacity in those buildings as a short-term item? So yes, absolutely, we can bring that forward as an idea and a continued thought process with that, how, how to increase the capacity, whether it's a six-period day or a twelve-period day, that, that type of thing.
Well, and I think that ALC is a really good model for you guys all to look at. I mean, it, it's, I mean, it's, it's already looked at a lot of, you know, and worked through a lot of the issues that, that go along with changing from a eight-period day until a, you know, a twelve-period day.
Well, I, I think sort of along that same vein, my question was, first of all, I think it's really important that you have this community group getting not only their perspectives and their experience, but their buy-in, that this is important. And that by the time this does, you do come in with a recommendation, you're al- already gonna have a group of people who have built that recommendation and who have bought into the importance of it. And second, I also wanna know, who are the experts? And maybe Mr. Homier alluded to them in your first slide about the different groups that were helping advise and counsel. But who are the educational experts who can talk to you about the schools of the future, about the different ways they're gonna look, about the different configurations in terms of grades being together? Who know about ideas that we haven't even considered yet? Are you bringing in those people as well who have that experience and that depth of expertise about how schools in the next ten or twenty years might look?
So we are a educational design firm. We've been designing schools for over twenty years. And we've had a lot of conversations with different districts about, you know, is there a STEM initiative in your building? Are you a project-based learning? Are you a different model, whether it's a block scheduling or, or a, you know, a longer delivery time during the piece? Cooperative Strategies is the national expert that also deals with educational capacity and approach and curriculum inadequacy type piece. So together, we'll be bringing forward some of those comments and questions about how it does impact capacity of a building or an approach to a building. When it comes to the actual design of the building, you'll be going out for that for the actual design process upon a successful referendum. So our duty stops at this point. Our goal will be, as the piece of this, as our educational experience is, to make sure that the dollar value estimated and appropriated for a new facility or for in addition to a facility meets the educational expectations that, that the task force and the cabinet and other individuals within your organization have said that's where we want to be. Does that answer your question?
Mostly, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, we need to clarify that the task force will recommend where to build and what to build, and then they're done. The design will be done, well, they're not gonna design the actual building itself. That's something that we'll work with somebody else to do that. But I'm confident in the expertise that they have. That's one of the reasons why we, we went with them, because of their expertise in, in the field of education. And so I, I don't have any concerns in that capacity. But where to build, what to build, then the task force is done and then we'll take on the next step as far as what, what the building actually looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I'd like to make it clear, when I was asking about the timeline before, I'm not in any hurry to get it done, just to get it done. You know, I want it to be done right, as I'm sure everybody wants it to be done right. And the task force is really to be commended, first of all, from your leadership that you've provided, but also on managing to pull all of this stuff together in a relatively short period of time. And then Superintendent said something about fifteen minutes ago that I'd kind of like to repeat is that is, there are no hidden agendas here. You know, we don't have this idea of, well, we're really gonna do this and we're not, we're just gonna push it through and we don't really want everything on the table. But I think it's, it's been really clear to me that everything will be on the, the table, including things like Ms. Becker just mentioned with perhaps a longer period day or, you know, restructuring within that environment, so, thank you.
I think short-term, we are going to have to look at those capacities. And if we choose to do a referendum, as we showed in the slide, it's twenty twenty-two before we could get a building built, and that could be an elementary. But what do we do in the meantime? That's a long time for our student population to go through year after year. And so is, you know, the capacity, the instructional space, how are we gonna continue to meet the needs of the students until the brick and mortar is done? And I think that's very important and that this committee is really looking at that too, is, what can we do short-term to help alleviate some of the overcrowding? And, or is there gonna be a recommendation that we add on to some buildings until a referendum? You know, who knows where we're gonna end up here? As you said, it's kind of an open book here, trying to make sure that we're looking at every nook and cranny, so.
Yeah, just a follow-up. So do you anticipate that you will be bringing before the board a recommendation to adjust some boundaries in the interim? As I recall, we kinda recently went through a big deal about boundary adjustments. And there was a lot of input from our parents and other community members on that. And I think the feeling, as I understood at the time, was, well, we're going to be building a new building anyway, so let's leave the boundaries the way they are. But now what I'm hearing a little bit more is, maybe we are looking at changing some boundaries in which cases there would be some families who might be affected by multiple changes within a period of several years until the new building is built and opened. I mean, you've, you've had a great crystal ball so far, so I'm not trying, trying to cloud it up here. Your best guess?
Yeah, I'll respond to that. There's actually, the ta- the task force is bringing two recommendations to you tonight. One is, they've decided, they've looked at, as the screen's up, we actually broke into groups and then had some larger discussion about what are options? One was just not to do anything and wait until the new buildings. They said, no, we're not gonna do that. Consensus was, of all those that were there, we need to bring boundary adjustment recommendations to the board. I think one of the slides said by October. So that, that's the intention. They're gonna bring boundary adjustments to address the, the schools that were highlighted in yellow that were over capacity, to try to address that. They also asking the board, which really is probably, it's more of a management decision, but we probably thought we would bring it here, so, 'cause people may reach out to you and complain about it. But they would like to put the second preference in after we've done sibling is to look at those students who have applied to get into district-wide schools. If you come from one of the overcrowded schools, you would get the next option. And then if there's any space left after that, it would be a full-fledged lottery. So this is not a, an action item. So I guess if we could just kinda, since it's really more of a management decision, we're asking just for your support that we do that for the nineteen twenty school year that after we do the sibling preference, we look at all the applicants that are from the crowded schools and give them the next draw, and then do a normal lottery after that if there's any spaces left. But they are intending to bring boundary suggestions for your approval in October.
One, one quick follow-up?
Okay.
So I, I don't remember if this was a conversation I had with several parents after the citizens' voice meeting last week or somebody who actually spoke. But one of the, the issues of, of, well, my child is being moved out of an overcrowded school to a choice school that's not overcrowded, is it makes it better for students in both buildings? And that they will get a potentially better education, certainly less stress-free from the kinds of things that overcrowding can, can bring. So I think there are a number of ways that, you know, we can address some of those potential.
Yeah, I just, as Mark, I think you said this a couple of times.
Yes.
We really believe it's not gonna have that much of an impact when you take, for one thing, there's really not a lot of space every year. When you, after you've done sibling preferences, there's not a lot of seats. But we think it'll have a little impact, but not enough to say, okay, then we don't need to do banners. We still need to do boundaries. But just a way to try to get those schools that aren't at capacity and there's all the grade levels to up to capacity. As I, as I stated back in last spring, and then I think the directive I got from the board was to bring a larger boundary adjustment recommendation to you by October. So we're still gonna hear the concerns about, I bought a school, I bought my house so they can go to this school, now my kids are gonna have to transit. I mean, we're gonna hear the same stuff over and over again that we heard in the spring. But like I said, the task force is gonna bring a recommendation to adjust boundaries for a temporary solution to the overcrowdedness, knowing that if the recommendation is to build a new school or two, you're gonna have to do that again.
Ms. Becker.
My question's a little bit nebulous and I don't really quite know how to phrase it. But so where does cost come into any of the discussions? I mean, how, and how do you, how do you choose between, or, or do you, or do you let the group? So for instance, you know, several years ago, we had to add kindergarten classes. So how do you, or how is the group gonna choose between potentially, you know, adding two classrooms onto every single building in the district? And, or, you know, building a new building? Or, you know, so how are those kind of, and if there is a cost, I mean, I know there's costs associated, but how does the cost piece get into the conversation?
So that the cost piece will be integrated into the conversation as soon as we start talking about solutions.
Okay.
And it is a very difficult piece, especially when you're talking about twenty-five or thirty members that don't have experience in operating a school or don't have construction experience. You'll always have a better efficiency if, instead of doing two classrooms at five buildings to do one new building, it's gonna be less cost per square foot. But will that really meet what you're trying to do from a transportation standpoint or from an education standpoint? Those are the pieces that have to factor in. So the, the task force will be struggling and the cabinet will be struggling with, you know, what's the best approach from our boundary scenario long-term? What's the best approach for building operations? Because your first cost of your building is your referendum cost. It's a big number. But the true costs of a building are the staffing and the operational costs, which far exceed the, the capital cost. So it's about making the right decision for long-term planning and the educational needs. But all of that information will be provided in, I'll call it budgetary or big-picture idea of cost-benefit analysis approach as they go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one final, thank you, question dealing with boundary adjustments. It is true, as has already been referenced, that we were just, had the opportunity not long ago to consider this. Will you be using a different metric to assess, evaluate the need? Or where the student population should be moved to, different than what had been previously presented? Or do you know at this point, or will you simply draw from what was, or any thoughts regarding that?
At this point, I'm gonna say that the data is gonna drive it to begin with. And then, once the data starts the drive, then we have to look at, what does it really mean to transportation system or to staffing or to the impact on a building, whether it's demographics or operations or core, core size, circulation around the buildings? You have a number of buildings that have, you know, difficulties due to traffic situations in the roads and the streets and the infrastructure. So all of that will factor into the final boundary recommendations.
Yeah, I, I, as far as the actual software, the software they use is probably very similar to the software we use when we, but they're gonna pull in a lot more information than, than what we used.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point oh-one, approval of purchase agreement for the sale of multi-service building. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this time I'm gonna have John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Munoz. As I was sitting there thinking about this, I was wondering if I should go the short story or the long story on this item? And then I was also musing to myself. It does sound odd to be bringing to you a purchase agreement on selling a building when we just got done telling you how we don't have enough buildings. But the long story on this told quickly is back to the Future Facilities Task Force in 2012. They talked about the need to have better maintenance space. And I think Director Schluessner can echo the discussions that had taken place at that time. Opportunity came forward in 2013 to buy the old People's Co-op Headquarters facility. It took a while to get that remodeled and up to speed and get all the staff moved over there. But that did happen over the last few years. Additionally, there were office people at the- people at the maintenance service building that we're discussing right now. Some of those have been moved back to Edison, and over the summer, a number of people have been shifted to the Mighty Oaks Early Learning School, the Hoover Early Learning School that's about to open, and honestly, any other nook and cranny we could find within the district. We've tried to spread people out so that we could free up this building for operating it into the future. So, what we have, we put this building on the market back in February at a price of $2,500,000. The last appraisal that the district had done on this building was at $2 million. We did receive an offer at $2 million even back on July 16th, and we countered at $2,250,000, and it was accepted. The buyer is Olmsted Medical Center, and they'd like to close on the property on October 1st. There is one main contingency, we're still trying to work out with the parking lot, and trying to make sure we have clear title to that. So, there's some ongoing negotiation with another party right now, before we can say we're ready to close on this. But, first step is, we need your approval, because that was the contingency we wrote into the purchase agreement.
Any questions?
Could you very briefly tell us, or people who happen to be watching this, why the MSB building would not be suitable for an elementary school, without going into a lot of detail? I mean, I think it's pretty clear if you visit the space, that it's not, but...
Sure. It looks like a warehouse, because it is a warehouse. About half of it is office space that isn't in bad shape, really, but it is a little bit more expensive to operate. The utilities there are probably higher than other properties. There's issues with, if you were going to convert that into a playground, you know, well, where would the playground go? There's issues with parking. There's issues with traffic flow. It just probably wouldn't make an ideal school site for children.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Schluessner.
Along those lines, it's on a piece of land not large enough for an elementary school as well. Correct?
Yep. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Is there any discussion? All in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
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 Opposed? This is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase agreement with Olmsted Medical Center in the amount of $2,250,000 for the sale of the multi-service building located at 10 9 and 1/2 Streets Southeast Rochester, Minnesota.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded twice. All in favor, say, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Carlson, can you explain for the good of the board and public, the money that comes in from the sale of this building, where that goes?
Thank you. I realize I didn't say that. So, there is no debt on this building. We've owned it for a number of years, and it, so, we don't have to worry about satisfying any debt on the building. So, then, the next order of how we could use the funds, according to Minnesota State Statute, would be to put in the operating capital fund to be used to improve other buildings within the district, or to replace buildings. So, there is a potential for, we're talking about looking at different storage needs and issues, but not saying that money is committed to that. It will sit in our operating capital fund as we, until we need it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.02, approval of revisions to the policies manual. Mr. Barlow.
Yes, had the opportunity on the 23rd of July to meet and with others review some 20 policies. The majority of the recommended changes are recommendations which come from the Minnesota School Board Association, and consist primarily of language changes, so I will make you aware of those, so you can quickly, yet purposely, go through these. The first policy is 102, equal education opportunity, where there was a language change from striking the word gender to include gender identity and expression. That was the change for that policy. And let me perhaps ask to the chair at this point, would you like me to go through each policy to identify all of the changes, or would you prefer me to defer to the members of the board, to see if they have questions regarding any of the policies and the changes?
Well, I'd certainly defer to the members of the board, also, if they have questions. However, because we do have copies of the original policy and the changes, proposed changes, we have those. I think perhaps if you would just do sort of the Reader's Digest version.
Sure.
And then if we have questions, we'll ask you.
Yeah, I prefer the Cliff Notes myself, so...
Cliff Notes, yes. I'm old.
But, having said that, our next policy would then be 205, which dealt with open and closed meetings, and it provided the language opportunity to know that meetings could be conducted by interactive technology, which was, I think, a real plus and a win. 206 dealt with public participation in school board meetings, complaints about personnel at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. And there, I'm wanting to simply say that there was striking the language of citizens to, in favor of, the usage of the word persons. Again, a relatively minor change. Moving to 401, there was some new MSBA language that was included, that, like a previous policy, included struck gender, and then referenced inclusion of including gender identity or expressions. Okay? For many of our upcoming policies, that will be the change there, okay? 404 is another policy that was changed, 404C. And I would invite Director Workman, she was there as well, if there's any things that stood on your mind that you'd like to comment on as we do this, feel free to, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. 404, 3C, language change that eliminated the State Board of Teaching to the Minnesota Professional Educators Licensing and Standards Board. Legislative change there. And then moving to 406. And I understand, if you're a member of the audience or the viewing public, that this is not one of the more exciting portions of our board meetings, but it is nonetheless required, requirement of the same language change in 406, eliminating Board of Teaching to Minnesota Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. Moving quickly to Policy 413, striking the language gender in Section 1 under purpose, and in favor of including gender identity or expression, and several of the sections of that policy, I won't go over each section, but the language change is the same. In addition to the last section of that policy, striking the word "and," and including "and/or" sexual abuse prevention, just to add some, that's dissemination of policy and training, that particular additional change there. Moving quickly to our drug-free workplace, drug-free school policy, which is 418, language that included liquor and alcohol, was being eliminated based on state statute in certain buildings or grounds. I think the intent was to, well, I don't want to speak for the legislative intent.
Smart choice.
And 419 is our next policy of change. To catch my breath, any comments, inputs, concerns, before we move forward, continue this.
This is exciting, Don.
Okay. I hope that it would be.
It's a roller coaster.
It is. I love policies. I think it's exciting.
I understand why Julie wanted to do this as often, and it's thorough as she did. Our next policy deals with tobacco-free environment, which, tobacco and tobacco-related devices defined, it was important to have that language included, which is intended for human consumption, and one of the elements of change. And then also, including but not limited to that additional language, then the language is present. And then finally, under tobacco-related devices, these are devices intentionally designed or intended to be used in a manner which enables to chewing, sniffing, smoking, or inhalation of vapors of tobacco or tobacco products, for example. And then moving quickly to 421, gifts to employees and school board members. We now are able to receive a plaque with a resale value of $5 or less, with an inscription recognizing an individual for an accomplishment. So, we know we have a school board, potential school board, member out there, so you should know that. And then...
$5 would be a lot.
Yes. We've been up to... 423, employee-student relations, specifically, school district action, eliminating Board of Teaching to, what has already been referenced, Minnesota Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. That noted in two locations in the policy. And then moving to 424, same change. 427, same change. Moving to 50...
Aye.
Five?
Uh-huh.
And here, we're looking at a legal change. Let me get to that. With these policies, there are legal references or case law that's referenced, and that, those case laws are added under legal. Moving now to Policy 509. Several sections dealing with, and this policy deals with students, and enrollment to our option programs. We wanted to clarify the language, and I would like to maybe ask the board, if you had opportunity to look at that, is this now clear to you, and do you think it maybe addresses and answers questions that have been presented to us in the past?
Yeah, this was the enrollment of non-resident students, and I know there's some questions about that before.
I think the way it was structured, at one section, it said lottery on it, and people might confuse lottery with our choice, district-wide choice schools that we have, as opposed to a lottery to open enroll from another school district into our district.
Thank you. And then Policy 510, dealing with school activities, eliminating the language, it shall be the responsibility to simply move to the superintendent shall be responsible for disseminating the information. And that was the predominant change there, to include a legal reference as well, eliminating curricular "and," and simply having extracurriculars insurance. Then, and we're nearing the end, I believe, Policy 511. Under, this is student fundraising, eliminating, shall be the responsibility to simply stating it is, shall be the responsibility, the student, building administrator shall be responsible for developing said policies, and that was the key language change there, to include a MSBA cross-reference of their model policy, which is also 713. 524, a legal reference being eliminated here.
Internet, that's the internet policy.
The internet policy. 530, which was immunization requirements. Inclusion of language under student immunization requirements, the following language, advanced practice, registered nurse, physician assistant, which now is here and after, simply references medical statement affirming, and that was the key change there, medical statement versus those positions by name. And I believe, let me see, 50...
Or 530.
530. Organization of school calendar and school day. Language that was eliminated, and language that was included. The language included was, the school board's annual school calendar may include plans for up to five days of instruction provided through online instruction due to implement weather. There are a number of sections that were also identified, and a legal statute that was changed and identified as e-learning days. And I believe that completes the policy that we're presenting.
Yeah, I would like to just call your attention, probably the biggest change to 524, we added a section to address students' recording on district property. The change is, we add that students are prohibited from audio or video recording on school property without prior permission from the principal or a teacher, and that permission will be granted only for an educational purpose. So, this is a concern that we've been seeing in the last couple of years, of students videotaping things going on in school, and then putting them out there on social media. So, we worked with our legal counsel to draft that piece to add to it, and it's something that we will work with our administrators, and make sure that it makes students aware of that change. I'm sorry.
And then, are you going to talk about 506?
Well, I will, but...
I just have a question on 421. So, typically, as a group, with the, when we're going through our policies, we usually change any heading that says procedure. This particular one still has a procedure section, so I don't, yeah, so we miss that one as a group, so I don't know if we need to take that off. It doesn't really appear that it is an actual procedure like some of the other ones are. So, I know sometimes we just change the particular heading, but this one, it seems like we missed it.
Which number was that?
421.
421. I know that, that happened in 511, there was a procedure that was removed.
Yeah, I know. I know that.
Right, but this is a different one.
Yeah, this is 421.
Do you want to send that one back to the drawing board?
Well, I mean, we usually just, like, change a word, because this isn't, because sometimes there are actual things that Wendy can go out and put in the procedural...
Handbook.
Handbook, but this appears that it's not, it's not that.
It's really just the process that people have to handle.
Yeah, so I know we've come up with a different word in some of the other ones.
So, I guess I would recommend that we just entitle Section 4 as process versus procedures.
That's fine.
Since this is a briefing, that can be part of the briefing, because you won't be taking action until the next meeting.
And I know it's small, but I think we've been trying to be consistent with how they're worded.
That's a good point. Thank you. Ms. Workman.
I know you want to adjourn.
Yes, too.
Quickly, just so people who are watching understand, the school board sets the policy... the policies and then the administration implements the policies and so we do the what and the administration does the how, and that's where the procedures come in. So the reason that we are separating out procedures from policies at this point is because those procedures do not need school board approval for changes. And once we have taken them away from the policy, then we don't have to bring that entire policy back just because there's been a change in how it is implemented.
Thank you. Any other kind of next questions? Mr. Barlow.
And if I may, just for the audience and viewing as well, so Superintendent, and I think it is important, policy 524, and that change, will that also be included or it's not already part of the student handbook and, okay? Thank you.
Anything else? My understanding is that there will be hamburgers in the parking lot?
It's not raining.
It's not raining, so I don't know if it's raining out there. And Mr. Munoz is not going to be cooking this.
Not, not cooking this year, no.
But I'm sure they'll still be delicious. And this meeting is adjourned at 5:39 PM.